Ready when you are, Mr. President.
All right, I'm gonna go to the cultural orders, the special meeting of the board of directors of the city of Sanitary District. For January thirteenth. Um, and ask for a roll call, please.
Thank you. Director Napoleon Wiltshire.
Here.
Assistant Secretary, or sorry, Vice Secretary Arlene Schaefer. Secretary Robert Luden. Vice President Arthur Perry. President Mike Schaefer.
I'm here, but I'll make a quick correction. Bob Luden is the Vice President and Arthur Perry is the Secretary.
Thank you. It's the fires.
Okay, so we have that over?
We don't need to do it over. Thank you.
All right, so we have established a forum, and now I'll open it up for public comments. Seeing no one here in the audits, is there anyone? Virtually that has public comment, we know of?
Nobody's answered.
And we'll go to I N C, the twenty twenty five to twenty third is the strategic plan. Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, and happy to be your board of directors. Um, this morning, uh, is our official kickoff meeting for the twenty twenty five thirty of the plan. And this is actually, since I've been here, this will be our fourth. Five year strategic plan. Uh, it is senior at all, um, in two thousand ten, when I was retired. Uh, we had a Sultan, very nice, facilitate our strategic plan. Um, since then, the last two, two, three plans was facilitated by staff, saved us about twenty five hundred dollars. And so we're gonna continue on that success and, 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 um, develop our twenty twenty five strategic plan, um, facilitated by my staff. Uh, on the screen here today is, it's a full schedule for the adoption of the, of the new plan. As I mentioned today, today, uh, is our, is our kickoff meeting. Uh, once we get some comments and feedback, uh, on the board of directors, um, then the next couple of months, uh, I will be able to staff, uh, develop the strategies and the goals and at least the timeline of, of the plan. Um, and then we will, we will present that draft, uh, plan through the board on, on April eighth. Um, if there are comments and feedback, um, any revisions to the draft plan, and then we'll submit that to the legislative advisory committee on May fourteenth. If there are comments, suggestions. To turn that back to the board on May twenty sixth, and if needed, we can have a meeting as intended, with anticipation of adoption on, on June twenty third, five of the, of the next five years of this plan. Very exciting. So let's.
And that's. Yeah, it did. Sorry. What is going on? Oh, now, now it goes too fast. What's happening? It's like liking, and then it goes too fast.
We need, need to map the audio and video. Uh, it's, yes, we're having some complications with the technology here, but we'll try to advise it.
Yeah, let me close every open spot, sorry, it's sticking. There it goes.
Okay, so let's, let's talk about where we are now, so I'm gonna share with the board the data of the project we made since two thousand ten. So go to the next slide. And the first, um, um. Achievement or, or approximately naked is, is I want to share the board the number of sewer spills, ten to two spills, or ten to two overflows we've had in, in the past five years, and, and as you see, uh, we've had a couple of years, um, that we experienced, uh, worse sewer spills. But in the last, but three out of five years, we had only one, which is good news, so, um, uh, our goal is to have zero sewer spills. Uh, but if you look at, um, again, the last five years, three out of five years, we had one. In fact, um, knock on wood, um, next month, uh, if we experience no sewer spills, there'd be twelve consecutive months without a sewer spill. So it must be great, so, so hopefully we'll continue that trend. Uh, next slide, please.
I have a question.
Yes.
Does that include the Friday spills?
No, it's our fault, it's our fault, yeah, not correct. So then if you look at the, uh, number of sewer spills, um, per the five year plans, uh, the strategic plan, uh, you, you can see, uh, that right now, we have about thirteen sewer spills in the last five years. Uh, if you go back to the, um, two thousand fifteen, twenty, big plan, you had about fifteen sewer spills, and then the first big plan is up to the, I think, we had, um, fifteen sewer spills. So, so far, we're on a trend of, of fewer spills in the last, um, um, two previous, uh, um. Pre-plans, but I just wanted to remind, um, the board that this is on, uh. Uh, our, our strategic, uh, twenty, twenty, um, twenty twenty five plan ends on June third, so there is another six months to go, but right now, we have about thirteen, um, sewer spills in the last five years. Now, next slide. The good news is, these, these sewer spills that we've had in the past five years are, are, are small to build. Right? They're not gonna catch the attention of the regional water quality board. They're more concerned about large violators, you know, sewer spills that are a hundred thousand gallons, a million gallons, and they're always gonna get the, the attention uh, of the regional water quality board. Before the win, um, these last five years are, are the worst sewer spills, that's, uh, our gallons are very minimal. Uh, you'll see the, the, uh, the large round, two thousand ten, two fifteen, gallons per gallon due to one spill. Um, spill on, um, the riverbank pump station, but seventy five thousand gallons that we had, and we got a similar fine, because that, that's why that, that charge is so high, but historically, the number of spills is relatively small. And go to next slide, the better news is that all the spills we had last, we were tracking a hundred percent of that. So the, the staff's doing a really good job, wants to go to the storm drain, they can track where it's going, and then we capture it before it looks in the waterway. Um, so that's really good, yeah, uh, we, uh, we look at, um, the amount of, uh, gallons or the capital of sewage, so this is, this is a significant, um, uh, point to the theater that, uh, staff is doing a really great job capturing, uh, as much as they can.
Were the big ones a hundred percent of work?
What's that?
Is it close to a hundred percent?
It's ninety percent, ninety. That's pretty good. So another good positive aspect of the district has been very proactive, um, on, on, on repairing or replacing, um, sewer strikes with the board available. Um, since two thousand ten, we spent, uh, we're twenty five million dollars on replacing our infrastructure, and that was out going to the debt. Uh, so that's a page ago, so that's, that's in the, that's, 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 uh, a great achievement on, on the district. Next slide. So on the solid waste side, uh, in two thousand ten, uh, our diversion was just about, uh, fifty two percent. Uh, now we're looking at sixty one percent. Uh, hopefully now that, and going even higher with our, um, third quarter, or our source separation, um, collection program, hopefully the numbers will go a little bit higher. Uh, also, as in the future, we're looking at top of the world rates, where people can, um, grow less trash in the smallest trash can, so hopefully, um, that number sixty two percent will reach our ultimate goal to seventy five percent, but as you see, we're learning from this, uh, good office on the solid waste side. The next slide.
I remember, I remember that it was below fifty percent, it really was fifty two percent.
Yes, it was, we had a, they, uh, we had occupation, uh, C R, uh, um, uh, based on our, our conversion and, and, uh, based on their.
That was completely no C C, was it?
Uh, I don't think it was.
Sure. I think it's like one, one or more percent.
Yeah, though, I have to look at, I don't think I think it was.
Was, was that the improvement due to the organic scan?
Yes. I mean, it's, 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 you go to the next slide. You know, demonstrate that, so this is a really good demonstration of, of the organic side of the program, so. In two thousand ten, two thousand fifteen, we, we, we weren't recycling organics, and we were still taking the landfill. It was considered, uh, alternative covers, but we're still taking the landfill. Um, and then, you know, two thousand thirteen, this is the year we kicked off, where the first A C in Southern California implemented a third side organic excitement program, where our organics, which included the green waste and food scraps, is converted into renewable natural gas. However, in two thousand fifteen, twenty, we still had significant amount, well, about almost ten thousand tons of, of green waste, but still, our organics would still go in the landfill. But if you look the last five years, it really be able to capture most of that, those nutrients, most of the organics, uh, this may recycle, we're, we're seeing a lot, maybe a couple thousand, uh, gallons a year, or only going to the landfill, so huge, huge, um, um, achievements on the organic side of, of reducing our diversion, reducing greenhouse gas emissions, through our, our, our.
You said, you said now and two months' time.
Sorry, Tom. Yes, thank you.
Was that, what was the amount you need?
Uh, while we're, as you, we're collecting about almost, uh, about thirty eight thousand, um, tons of organics. I didn't worry about it. Uh, another, another really good program that's been very successful is our door-to-door household house waste collection program, and, and that's where residents, um, can legally and easily dispose of, um, how, how type of waste, like, um, uh, paint. Uh, they can be, um, pesticides, um, they can be sharps, um, motor oil, um, pool chemicals, whatever, you know, stuff that's not supposed to go into the landfill. And when we first implemented the door-to-door collection program, it was two thousand seventeen, and that was strictly just for seniors disabled residents. Yes.
Is that include fire extinguishers? I had one of my neighbors say, what do I do with my fire extinguisher? Oh, I don't.
I don't know, I, we didn't call that up, I don't, that, that's a useless matter, we'll call it off on that.
Just curious.
Yeah, I don't know, so we'll find out.
I had asked for my, you know, when I had my business, I don't know if that made it, they wouldn't, they wouldn't take, they wouldn't take. So I, I don't know.
We'll find out.
We have to get some way to just get rid of it.
Yeah.
We want it into trash.
Correct, correct.
I was, I was curious, yeah.
Good point. We'll look into that. Uh, but you see, when we, when we went, um, uh, district wide, a lot of all aggression, um, it, it really caught on, um, you know, over eighty five thousand pounds, uh, eighty thirty of the collective, and I, I'm obviously not for the government, the whole pounds, um, eventually, as, as we continue to, uh, issue the public on this really convenient program, as, as I mentioned, um, to, to the public in the past. I don't know much, maybe they just have this type of program available. Uh, I know in my city in Orange, I have to drive, uh, you know, up the fifty five freeway, up to the ninety one, and get off, off, uh, Miss Kramer in, in fantasy. It's a common language, so this is a really convenient way where residents just call up C N R and, 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 oh, here's, here's, here's how to collect it, here's the quantities. And they just put it on the curb, it's picked up. Very convenient, easy.
They go for the sharps on the curb.
Yes, they can put sharp, as long as, as long as it's in a, a storage container, that they can't shut it, but they don't collect sharps.
The sharps container.
Sharp container, it can be in an apartment, whatever it is, technically, you know. Correct for the, for the sharps, but they can, they can put it in, they just can't put it like in the plastic bag, I ask, it's, uh, some kind of container that protects the, the person, you know, material.
Does that include batteries?
Uh, yes, ours too, absolutely.
No, I mean, does that drainage include batteries?
Yes, yes, it does. Uh, next slide, what is, do we get incorrect to the, the?
Passionate choice opposed to the community, it's a beach, we get incorrect for this.
Well, that's right, so it's a diversion. Yeah, because it's, it doesn't count for diversion, the agent of the, of, you know, diversion, it's just something against a lot of, you have to, we can't, uh, we're not allowed to throw these materials in, into the tar race, and we have to force them off our programs, suit to the rest, but it doesn't count for our city to present a version.
I think our question is, when you show off one of those three tenders, they ask where you're from.
Yeah.
So, you have to get a name.
Yeah, it's correct, it's not, it's not a country, but we don't, okay, but that's just part of what we're. So most of our social media even has, would take it off, uh. The big factor for our social media, uh, is also is, is the access to next door, I think that was, that was the big engagement browser, that, as you might recall, um, um, network, they really recognize staff in districts, and we've been, you know, we couldn't communicate with our residents through next door. But thanks to C S D A's lobbying efforts, um, uh, next door, it did recognize some of the districts, and somehow, staff was able to communicate with our, on the next door app, as well as other social media apps that are very successful, like, like X, uh, Facebook, Instagram. Uh, the staff has been really doing a job, uh, keeping the public on, on, on all the activities going on in the district, so, so, um, these are just, so these are the engagements we see, it's just, it's just awful work, awful work, right, and, uh, you know, most of the scene going even higher.
You know, I'm watching the news this morning, they were talking about, uh, uh, there's this, this, I don't know if it's an app, I assume it is, called Watch. And it knows that you can get notifications, or you can get check on status of different disasters and things like that. I don't know if that's what we can give up, you know, if there were, you know, a major sewer spill, or if there was a major trash trucks driver, something that we could put information on.
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, no, my wife said she did tell on the app that she gets notifications when there are fire for, for, around California.
I think that's now watch.
Uh, we have the same, Mesa, Mesa has a, uh, discipline where they, where they, in, in an emergency, they can contact different areas of the city.
We do.
We do that, don't we?
Yes.
Yes, we have that.
And, I mean.
It's a reverse call or something.
Let us see.
Yeah, um, but do we have the same ability to contact everybody downstream or upstream of the, of the plum station?
I think we could specify the areas.
We can, yes.
Have we ever?
We haven't had to, no.
Fortune.
Yes.
Okay. So we have broad organization since two thousand ten, our, our staff levels have doubled, uh, from twelve to two twenty five. Next slide, and as expected, that means our expenditures are, are stacking, um, uh, for staffing, so, um, our, our, the uh, all that goes into expenditures have increased about two million dollars to, uh, three point six million dollars a, a year. Uh, but if you look at the next slide. Um, this might be a little confusing, so if, so, so if you just look, um, this is just revenue side, so, right, so this is the revenue from two thousand ten to twenty twenty three, and so our revenues have increased in two thousand ten, twenty three, over twenty six percent. And if you look at the expenditure side, two thousand ten, twenty twenty three, our expenditures have increased over, over forty one percent. But if you compare the greens from the revenues and expenditures, you'll notice one thing. The expenditures are below revenues, so that's a good thing. Right, so, so in two thousand ten, we took in ten, ten and a half million dollars, but we only spent eight million dollars. Twenty twenty three, we took in three, thirteen point three million dollars, we're instead of eleven point three million dollars. So even though our revenue expenditures are up since two thousand ten, it's still below the revenue. So, this is, as I mentioned, our, our, going to include our twenty twenty five strategic plan, and it's been our most efficient plan in depth. We had over a hundred and twenty five more routines, and then please announce for me to use it, but it's bad majority of those goals, of eighty six goals we achieved. Some of the goals are in progress, though, just there's never really, no, there's no, um, deadline, they're just continuing in progress on those goals. But we did have so, several goals that weren't ready to start, and some that we had to, now the planes are really canceled. If you go to the next slide, I'll, I'll, I think my, my goal not started, some of the goals that were started were really beyond our control, uh, for example. Uh, one of the goals was to incorporate new composite manholes to record it by location with U P S, date, and then solve, um, the depth, it's a very big advantage system, so, um. We were waiting for, um, for this, this new comment, so this was related to our, um, we want to incorporate the storm drain system into our, our G P S system. And because we couldn't do that, because the city was still, uh, across the dock with the storm drain, I was hurt, we're gonna put it out there this year. Once that mess finds a dock, we can, our, our plan is to incorporate that data into, yeah, so when, um, a sewer goes into the storm drain, they can easy track it, yes, they can capture it. So that's, that's what we find in the future. Uh, another goal that was not started was the, um, feasibility study to install batteries, um, to back up our solar system near H B, uh, uh, H Q. So if there was a power outage, uh, we don't have the grid generator in, the, the battery, backup battery can provide that storage, can provide that power to us. Uh, we couldn't do that because of lack of funding. Another goal that we, we just didn't start was, um, creating a show and tell visit elementary schools, and, and we're finding out that it's, it's hard and challenging for the schools, because there are, there are goals for it to hit through the curriculum, this is a group out of state, and it'd be coming with a different program, they, they get a little nervous on that, and so it's, it's very difficult to work with, with the school district. And then, as you know, um, Orange County, the, I'm sorry, the O C C Recycling Center, um, to discuss a new collection system, we couldn't really do that because of the leadership, um. And that's been closed, uh, to the public, um, though I am caring that, um, uh, O C C, uh, is gonna be able to go soon, hopefully it'll have some more information, so you got the latest on the page, so stay tuned on that.
Uh, yeah. Uh, I went back and looked, um, at the, uh. Well, I guess it's by year. It was a twenty twenty five strategic plan, and I, I only show about nineteen red box on there. You had a number significantly higher than.
No, red boxes mean delay, I think we have, we have a four, four little red boxes, just four.
Oh, I thought it was completed.
No, greens completed, greens completed, ready.
Okay, I'm, I'm off by one column.
Is that gonna open up this next week? From your memo?
The O C C, I don't know yet, I know, um, they're supposed to let me know, so I'm hoping, um, sooner than, uh, June.
Once we know, so should we broadcast?
We will.
Everybody.
Yeah, if you want to, definitely. Yeah. Okay, next slide, I just want to show a couple of examples of goals that were delayed, or, or could have been started anymore, or we stopped, and that one was, as you know, we used to have drop-off boxes here at H Q for pharmaceuticals and sharps, uh, we, we stopped doing that because we bought up, some people were, were business, were starting to bring in their, their, their pharmaceuticals, or, or, um, large bunches sharps, and couldn't, couldn't store in, um, um, in the drop-off box, so we just started, so we stopped that program, and for residents of sharps, for those who are building, or have some health education program. In the drop-off program for pharmaceuticals, I know a lot of, um, pharmacies I know, I know that one of my pharmacies in, in Dallas, or they actually have a box there, so. Right, right, so, so that's, so that's what we don't have here anymore, so, so we stopped that program, and as you know, we also had a really successful, um, drop-off program for our. And the flash, uh, the worst of the, uh, that was unfortunate. The, the black of all, it's kind of intensive around, not just, uh, coast to face, but around Southern California, we were getting people from like L A, going down the drop off or flags. And then COVID did us, right, um, and then when COVID did us, the, the boy scouts, it seemed like they went away. And so we're so glad they always flag, they always flag, and we had no way to dispose of this, we had to stop it. Unfortunately, we did find a real way to dispose of those flags, um, but this probably is trying to stop the program, and we just, uh, probably, but something we waited for. Was that, was it from the, we either burn them or, or bury them. Two, two of two.
There was a excuse me, we had talked about, and I had talked to Kim Deutsch, Orange County Secondary District. There are, I think it's something, in Kern County, they, they have a, question, they have a big hole, and they buried flags in it.
You showed some of our parks, at least ceremonial burnings, they'll have some ceremonies in, in, in the fire departments, um, but they're, uh, too late, legally explosive, explosive flags, you gotta build a trash.
Where is that box, Jim?
At the box at the arts, I know.
We still have it.
Yes, and, and, uh, so we're still working on, on that program, um, I think you saw, also the veterans, I probably had, uh, uh, veterans all out there.
I know, that's, that's me, like, two months ago, I heard it, I, and Dan used to stop by my office. He's up to my house now. Didn't come by my office anymore, unless I'm not.
Are you, are you getting your, after?
I know. He just wore it.
Uh, okay. How, how do we get rid of the flags, I mean, do we have a, a vendor that's coming to get them? Or?
It'll take minutes.
Well, we don't, we don't, we don't, we don't, flags aren't.
Oh, oh, we can pay them.
So, um. Next slide, so that's where we've been, um, since two thousand ten, as you see, we've made some great progress, uh, and now it's time to develop our twenty twenty five strategic plan and start.
Done.
Receipts weren't mine, mine, our name, right? Go ahead.
So now it's time to do, uh, a SWOT announcement, which is called, uh, our, our strength weaknesses, our tools and breasts. And this is where I'm gonna request the board's participation in your input, and I'm not gonna ask all these questions of you, uh, this is something I'll do with staff as well, but the first thing I'd like to ask you is, is our strengths. So, order, what, what do you think we do well, and, and, and we'll document that down, so what, what do you think we do well?
You want answers now?
Yeah, yeah, so this, this is a space surprise, I need to know, what, what do you think we do well?
You know, one of the things you do well, my assessment is support, support us, the board. Make sure that, that we are, that we have all the tools that we need. Um, I never feel like I'm making a decision without having good information and good background. Staff.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
I, I think one of our strengths is the heel workers, I think we have a really good crew, those kind of handle pins and heel. I think we've upgraded that a lot.
Yes, definitely.
What else, anything else?
Well, we, you, you, I mentioned a lot of stuff on sanitary sewer overflows, you know, we've made significant progress, um, in the last fifteen years. And then, and, and we, we created the green waste program. I think we're doing substantially better throughout year in and year out, with the social media, and how we contact, um, how we can contact the community. Um, the eco data we have here in this room seems to be a, a, a big, big favor. We had an O C C selection system, like, I think it was paper, I forget, I think there were a couple items, simply encourage staff or citizenry to bring to O C C. Um, do you remember what that was, those, those papers, please? Uh, but I think we have a, you know, I, um. Continue, continue those efforts, um, and maybe include households, hazards, waste.
Yeah.
Um, I think there are some opportunities to improve those batteries, recycling, going. You know, we made a big, we, and working with, at least you recycle the uh, process in, in the region. Um. I think we need to make sure we, we are collecting the correct amount of fees for, um, our, our biggest, uh, biggest sewer project, cause of light, everything. It's better, women, men, they may not help us in that regard. And I think I would like to see, you know, we, we get every, I think we get quarterly, um. Uh, heating plant update. Um, I, chat me even. Help me learn how to read that.
Okay.
No, I'm just kidding, it's all. Well, after I booked you that the Redwoods were only.
Yeah.
Let's see, now welcome.
I got one, yes, I think our dealings with the city, water district, and school district is really valuable. Because we, we have an interest in what we'd like to do with schools, right?
Yes.
And plus even cities, I think that's why they're really valuable to us, and I think our, uh, battery collection program is good. And how, I mean, I, like, how are we doing this year in terms of, uh, schools that are participating?
Uh, it's, I think it's around the time, you know. About the same, or seventeen.
Just California school, one of the schools?
I have to check.
Yes, let me know. That's where my gracious is going, make sure there's a visitor, which makes your college partner being California. It should, you know, I think the, one of the things is that, that we as a district, and I think it's staff and, and, and chip with us as well. Is, is the public transparency of that, and the, the, the image, it's kind of getting into what the public says about us, but, um. Talk about the financial reporting, and we do things that other districts don't want to take time to do. Um, we have a website that's easy to navigate. Um, we don't hold anything back. I mean, we're, we're gonna put everything out there that we can put out there, and it's done, and I, I say this over and over again, it's done in a way that people can understand it, it's not government talk, it's people talk. Whether what other connect or use, we can communicate with our public, and a good example is the three carton rollout, the, the new, the rollout. I mean, people understood, I mean, we had questions and we had issues, but people understood what we were doing, and that all comes back to being as transparent as we can be.
Very good, thank you. Yeah, and, and on the strategic plan, um. We, we have accomplished a lot. Uh, what I would like to see is a simplified version of that. Um, so we used that we had eighty, eighty six, plus some that we didn't complete. Um, I would like to see those eighty six, um, you know, um, summarized. Um, with a plan, a potential plan. Um, with a plan, a potential plan to how to achieve them, and a lot of, um. So, so, so those things, then we could, that would be a way that the president could help formulate what's your worst plan here. Um, your resident goes through, try to figure out in twenty twenty-two, what, what we, what we should have put on your agenda. We may or may not have, um. Had any access to it.
Sure.
Um. So, and, you know, we get, we get quarterly reports, um. But I'd like to see, you know, th- those eighty-six things tied to particular years. And, and, and potential plans to doing. How to, how to, uh, achieve those.
Yes, okay.
So not only is that an objective, but. Some way, you know.
Yeah.
To see, uh, if any.
Thank you.
We can achieve that.
So, I'm sure you're talking to your constituents, and when you, when you talk to constituents, what, what are they saying about us, are they saying anything good about us? So what, what, what are you hearing from your constituents?
I didn't hear what you said.
So, I, I, I'm sure you're, I'm sure constituents, you know, you're going to walk, talk to your constituents, what are, are they, what are they saying about us? Are you hearing anything good or anything bad about us, what, what are the, what are the constituents saying about us, in?
I, I, I think what I hear, I mean. See, and when you say constituents, it could be. Family members, the living benefits, you, you talk about in general, I mean. Um. They. They don't say a lot because we, they don't have anything to complain about. I mean, the, the ones we do talk to that complain, you know, like, I had someone call me the other day about. In their complex they live in, where we pick our condo complex, there were Christmas trees left. And, or they'll call about. You know, my can didn't get picked up, things like that, and I'll have neighbors will come over and say, why didn't they pick up my can, I said. Did you, you know, did you have it out at the right, well, maybe they put it out late, so. What they say about us. I don't, it's minimal, I mean. It, it's kind of like, they know if they turn the water on, they're gonna get water, you know what I mean? They know that if they put their can out, it's gonna get picked up, and to me, that. That negligence or that, not negligence, their. Quietness speaks volumes. That we're doing the right things.
I, I want to add something too.
Sure.
The, the one thing that is interesting is no one called David in the Capitol Park area. Which normally they do, they call and they say, this is wrong, and my can is this and that. But instead, they chastised me on the part of the C R N R. It had black on their, uh. Uh, road, and that really bothered them. And that was it.
Okay, good.
So in other words, we were good.
Good, 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 no, we know, we do know, uh, from our last, uh, statewide survey, since we released thirty thousand residents, ninety-one percent of them said we're doing a good job. So we know that, and so we're gonna do another survey next fiscal year, so we did it every two years, we'll, we'll do that once, hopefully. That's gonna be high in campus, so that's, that's good news, um. We, yes.
The new card, the new, the new, the third card that we just put out. The can change, just I mean, joined in the fifteenth. Um. I would expect the public to still. As they're getting used to that program. Um, still need to be educated about. How to get, how to get the correct number of cards they want. I saw, I walked by a, a resident, they have three green cards on. And, and the final to pick up all three green cards. Which I saw the truck come and they picked up all three green cards. I don't think we want. Residents not to have a, a green card.
Right.
You know, that, that's something that is. There's a percentage that we have to achieve.
Right.
You know, the inversion of, um. At least the recycle.
Right.
And then maybe, and maybe it's some concern on the table about the grease.
Okay.
Um.
Fair enough, this, this is what Bob's saying, do they have, they have to have a blue card.
They have a blue card, a green card, and a black card.
Is anybody exempt from that?
No.
Nobody, for the green card.
No, those are the only. All right. Very good, throw a great comment on our strength, we move on to weaknesses, so what do you think we can improve on? Is there anything you can do that we can improve on?
I've got, uh, one. Name, a friend. The, the purple cans, or the blue cans, there's guys that are going around taking out the cans and bottles and all, everybody on the street.
Was that?
Not scared, okay. So he, that's, I don't know if we have availability to lockable. Blue cans or not, I mean, that's just an idea I have, okay, I don't know if that's possible, it's obviously not okay, but we still have some of those. Remember we looked at program, we have a lot, people could get the lockable, there's still some out there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm talking about the blue can, yeah, it says, the recyclables aren't in the green can, or the black can. They're in the blue can, and then it's just. It's, it's easy, because they go by and look at the blue can stuff and take it out, I mean, I, I just said.
We're losing it.
I mean, we're not losing it, but C R N R.
Yeah.
Just, I don't know if we could do it about better than, we'll, we'll look into that.
What, what else, what else, what other areas can we improve on?
Well, I think education on. Um, what is the most costly fee of the three kinds of carts that we collect? Uh, I think it's obvious that. C R N R chart is a lot less for the blue card. And so if residents knew that putting the, the max, putting the correct amount of material in the blue card. It would, it would cut, reduce our costs. Um. Palm bonds are a continuing opportunity for educating the public, because we have so many palm trees. And I still see a lot of palm fronds. In the green card, which. Those, those, those kinds of differently asked questions as Marissa and others staff get. Um, I, I think those are opportunities, which has to be able. These six frequently asked questions are something that we could educate the public better on.
Is that, was that in the last newsletter? Uh, what, where did she put Green Waste, Brons?
I don't know about Brons, I don't know about Brons, but we've done it in the past, I mean, I mean, we planned a better education newsletter, I think that's what Bob's saying is, we need to let them know exactly. Again, sure, good, good ones.
And, and one of the goals that we need to achieve, I'm sorry. Um. Is the two, the two percent increase. So we need to have a plan. It's Orange County Sand District's, uh. Policy that was violating, I guess, and I haven't been on the board and around Orange County Sand District, same like forever, but. You know, they, they're not gonna do anything.
What, what are you referring to, Bob, the two percent?
The, the, the inflow of rain margins first, which is, you know, so that's, that's a goal we've had since two thousand ten. It, it's a hiddenness, sometimes we are, sometimes we're not, you know, so it's.
What are you, what are you gonna measure, how are you gonna measure right now? There's no rain.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, but, but our first water and leaky sewers. The, the only way we have to measure it is with pump stations.
Yeah, right.
So staff know where. Um. Or as we do to keep giving the sewers, they know where, um, those leaks are occurring. And also, um, a potential big opportunity to save staff time is, um. We probably clean sewers. Try to clean them about every year. Some sewers never need cleaning. Orange County Sand District, and I'm sure John Gonzalez is aware of it, is at the program that they know where. Sewers that only need to be cleaned every five years are. But I don't know what percentage, you know, maybe our geography doesn't lend itself to that. Um, but. Uh, John Gonzalez is, uh, very knowledgeable about what. Instrumentation needs are pump stations. Um, he knows how Orange County Sand District trained their staff. Um, and, and he's very familiar with other programs, so I think. J- John needs to, um, be, um. Um. Maybe, well, I'm sure he's aware, but what changes potentially we could make.
He'll have to probably get. Learn our system better.
Yes, but I think that's all we can all, this should be my process, so, yes, this, these are all. Um, this experience will definitely come in handy as far as we need to evaluate our, our cleaning system, if we can do what, what he's saying, do you want to do that?
Has he made any suggestions to you since he's been a board?
Uh, and he still, is still learning processes.
That's curious, yeah.
I have a thought.
Yes.
I'm gonna jump in here just.
Chris.
Are you trying to?
Our lead's trying to get one.
Um, my thought is. Have we communicated with our area that we serve by turning around and maybe having just like a, a tape thing? That put on the can one morning and, and, and have it say. Happy New Year, a new year and new communications with you. And, and thank you for your help through the sales process. You know, something like.
Side of the trucks.
Pardon?
Truck on the side of the truck, that might be a side, you know, thank you for the, uh, speaking of signs.
Yeah.
We were told that. Somebody was gonna come around and put a sticker on the landfill that said landfill only, that hasn't happened yet, has it?
Yeah.
Now, initially, it was supposed to happen along with the rollout, um, and due to just kind of logistics with the rollout, that would be happening, I guess, in March, when a full inventory is done.
Okay.
So we'll have everything labeled.
I, I think. I think that's important, I mean, I, I, I agree regarding people make this stuff. I mean, faster than the middle of my refrigerator is that little pictorial, what to put into what, and. Um, my wife made a comment last night, she says, you're in the board of directors, and you put it in the wrong, I mean, I get scolded, so. I think people see those visual things and, and, and relate to that pretty well.
Yeah.
Chris, is that part of the label that's gonna go on in March? What March referred to, what you put in each can?
It'll be the relabeling of the, from the mixed waste to the landfill, it'll be that landfill only label that'll be coming. The other part, the blue part in green card should already have. But the landfill part will be only coming in March.
That's true. One more thing on weakness, so what frustrations or disappointments do the public encounter with, what do you think, what are the frustrations? Or disappointments that the public has with us, can you?
Hey, number one, I mean, there, there's really only one complaint that we get. And that's like, quite trashy, or you didn't tell us there's a, a day delay or something, I mean, that. I don't like you guys, that's the number one thing people say, is my trash didn't get picked up. And we know how that, the different things that contribute to that, and they're not always. Our fault, I mean. Institutions mess up, dude, but I think that's the overriding thing.
But you know, what's interesting is, like in my area, what they do is trash didn't get picked up, you didn't put it out in time, so guess what? They, they walk out over to the one that's gonna get picked up, and they call the side, and that satisfies them, and then they got them.
Yeah. But other than that, I. If, nobody complains about.
No.
I, I don't care, remember the last time I complained about anything to do with, with the sewer system, you know? So, it's. The trash is the most common thing that people.
I think on, on the sewer set folder.
Or the white flies, you know.
Proportions, or another, it could be just, you know, to, to maybe direct noise with wastewater, uh, we're addressing. Uh, great, this is the script, thank you, and let's talk about our opportunities, so what emerging trends or technology? Uh, can you take advantage of?
Well, I think some of the developments in the opportunities. Do you think the, the, the two percent influence, uh, spittle basin thing is? An opportunity to. Reduce potential pump stations overflow. Um. We need to get that, um, overflow at Harvard Pump Station done, because.
Yes.
We don't have the ability to generate that system easily as you'd like.
Yes.
I still, I think we're still working on, um. The air release valve processes. Um.
Who wants, I'm gonna, in the bridge, I want him in the bridge.
Well, I think some of them have been done.
Those, those have been removed, um, in the bridge, oh, yeah.
But I think our education system, well. Um. I, I don't know if, uh, we, we have fires in, um, C R N R's trucks. Uh, I think they mentioned there's at least one a week. And so we need to understand, I expect that's from batteries. We need to understand, or, um, I, I think they're installing water systems in the new trucks that they buy. But they have a certain number of old trucks. So I, I would, I would think they would be interested in, um. Improving the way we collect batteries. Um. And, and, and I would be a component of, uh, doing a pilot in the, in, in, in a particular route. You know, where, where we figure out how we can improve that battery recycle. Um, up to and including those cans, that, we've been making, we make those little cans with batteries per year. And then we have our name on them, um. Some more information about our, the program where we. Try to get batteries, try to get kids to bring batteries, kids or parents bring batteries to their school. Um, so we know.
Can I respond to that for a second? That brought back this picture of what they did in Europe, at some of the hotels, they have that plastic, yes, little things for batteries. It, in, in the hotels, I mean, so I walk in, here's a stack filled with batteries. So people that are living, coming to hotels, putting their batteries in there, I mean, that just, it was really neat, I, you know, you saw that picture, I mean. Maybe something like that could be a pilot project, and see if we have to collect more batteries, just a thought. I mean, that's a few, but I mean, I thought it was a pretty good idea.
Well, that's with the city, and then with the public, you know, there's, the city, the city would like to help, I'm sure, to figure out how to. Get more of it. Decrease the number of fires in the, in the C R N R trucks, C R N R must have. Um, some thoughts on that.
Yeah, we can, we can have C R N R that I can talk about that, I know they have a, I believe they have a, a patent suppression system inside the truck, you know, where they're actually watering the truck.
Yep.
Downset.
And those are the new trucks.
Yeah, the, the, the owner invented that, so I don't, like, other haulers have these impressions like that, so it happened that, and I think they're trying to. Myself and others, but so. They have a, a, a museum where there's actually water in the trucks, and so like a spray system inside trucks, so the fire departments didn't know, figured out.
Who did that?
Uh, the owner of, um, C R N R, probably, yeah, okay, I didn't know that.
You know.
And maybe have a new presentation for it.
I, I also think number one should be, um, PR, how we're doing public relations. I mean, we're doing a fairly good job, but I think if you, if we figure out, like, say in the spring, when the weather is better. And we can put up our little tents and things, and have some kind of, um, open house again, because people love that. And, and I think it's important to either have one or two of those, and have all that. Set out and, and give a lot of publicity, I mean, have the newspaper come and do something in it, sort of in there, and saying. And we're welcoming everybody and that kind of thing.
Sure, great, absolutely.
Yeah, one of the things I like to, you can talk about, um. Technology, we take advantage of, I still. It, you know. It kind of sticks with me when we had the big spill in the back bag, and I remember Rob talking about. And I remember Rob talking about the surge, the power surge, you remember when we think Edison might have been involved and. I I'd I'd like to see us be able to keep track of things that we rely on other agencies, you know, that could cause us a problem.
Does that be a worry?
Right, really. I I guess it would be a threat, it would. It it could leave us vulnerable if if. Heaven forbid, you know, the with with the fires, they're down to. Edison's already filed things in court saying, hey, you know, we're, we may be responsible, we're just gonna let you know.
Yeah.
There was a a couple of videotaped transformer blowing up and the fire started. If if we had some kind of way to track that ourselves, um, I don't know what kind of technologies available to that, but we can, we can say, hey, Addison, you did cause a surge which caused our pumps to go out. Why should we pay that exorbitant fee that we had to pay the state? We could pass some of that responsibility on.
Okay. What about, as Chris said, what about all the artificial intelligence?
About what?
Artificial intelligence. I mean, that's, that's what they're talking about.
You have the Bob's.
Um, no, you know, that's like, that's what I'm seeing now in in on um, ICNA and other governments that talk about what government artificial intelligence do um, in improve agencies. I know um, uh, under um, CCTVing credits, you know, there's there's new technology, right? So the old way uh, CCTV is you would, you would go over the camera, record the recording and someone would manually go and watch every session and then break it by itself. Well, now technology allows the camera, the camera going after the old rate, uh, the old rate of the condition of the pipe, um. The model, so this will require new interaction of the model.
Kind of ties back to what Bob was talking about, like, I mean, part of it could be those areas that don't, that don't need to be cleaned every year. Your artificial intelligence could identify what Bob's talking about, scrambling some of our operations.
Sure.
A couple more, um. The WDRs, the least discharge requirements of the state has a head to vote. Don't they require at least reporting of having an agency report, private pump station? Um, I don't remember. We used, we used to keep track of the private pump station.
We still, we, well, we still have um, private, yes, we still have, sorry, we do, we do, we do, uh, private sewer spells, so we've been documenting on that.
And and so with the extra staff, there was, there was something in in there that was um. If they can get this system clean, then staff will CCTV the system that's been cleaned. Is that going to take care of the every, once every ten year process?
Yes, and in fact, I think the next bunch of process will be bashing that, it has to be the entire system. So when all of it was uh, the ten years increase in.
So we're gonna, we're gonna still have to do that?
Yes.
Um. Well, if staff are looking at the sewers with our CCTV that have been cleaned, won't we get through CCTVing the entire system?
No, see, I, I don't think, I don't, I just went twenty four miles of of private, I don't think we're too CTV. We have lost sewer spells, we have sewer spells that are private, that is not allowed, so I don't think, no, it's not gonna make it.
It's not that extensive, so. Well, I'm not done checking to see how we work it.
Let's talk about threats.
Before you, yes, I'm sorry. Going back to the artificial intelligence. I think we need to take a look at maybe contact with CSBA. Who has some resources and and we need to do some kind of work. I mean, you asked that question a minute ago, um. It it's not something that that we've really thought about or talked, you know, talked about. I I'd really like to see us work with CSBA. They have people, your seminars or presentations. Let's take a look. I I think there's some opportunities uh, for us, whether it be communication like our lead's talking about or or the technology partners that we've talked about, you know, CCTVing. Um, let's see, I mean, we can sit here and guess, but I'd like to have some kind of presentation or some kind of uh input from experts, could even help with cybersecurity. We are not immune, this, this district is not immune from, from. You know, they're they're talking about infrastructure, there's a guy talking on sixty minutes last night about how um. The FBI is looking at all the infrastructure, water, wastewater, they mentioned the whole gamut. And maybe there's some artificial intelligence systems that we can utilize to protect us.
Definitely, and you just touched on cyber, cybersecurity, that kind of, that's a threat, right?
Yeah.
And that's a, that's a threat we need to look into. How do we, how do we um, enhance our IT system to protect best, protect us against attacks?
We just got granted.
Yes, yeah, most of the G N.
You know, it's interesting we brought the CSBA home, uh, because uh, actually, one of the meetings a year that they, we have a round table and we have, if you're sanitary, if you're a welder, if you're in this, you sit at those tables. And you get to ask them, so how do you do da 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 da? And and you know, I do this, you know, and you exchange ideas.
Right.
And I can push that more for uh, CSBA really easy because I'm on the board. And I can just say, you know, this is something I think we should have. And I'm in membership and all this stuff, so you know. That would be a great way to find out what other agencies are doing, you know?
That's, absolutely, yeah.
The cybersecurity is part of that brand for AI, artificial intelligence, not good at me. So, it's, I hope you can be. So.
Well, that, God, one point one, slow CCTV pipeline.
Yes.
It said we're gonna CCTV a quarter of the system each year.
And we're not doing that.
So we didn't, so that happened is uh. Not done. Is that still feasible?
I have to sit down with staff, right now, our our CCTV is pretty costly and it's, it's always costly breaking. So we find hire a contractor, our top staff, if he's willing to do it internally or we got a contractor. It's, it's a good discussion to have with staff through this strategic plan process.
We have, we have a.
Yes, but it's very, it's almost a goal, it's very costly now, and you know, technology, as you see, it's, it's rapid, it's rapidly changing. So um, I'm sure the staff's gonna put a budget replacement, I just don't know how much it's gonna be, so um, lots of pressure to get there.
Well, if we can end up cleaning a quarter of the system a year. We normally have a whole system CCTV every ten year.
Right, right.
So we, we wouldn't have to save a contractor to see the entire team. They may have, they may have some um, trade, but we may never have.
Correct.
What would be the concept?
Great, but I don't know, I don't, we can, right, we can pick out what it costs right now.
But it's boss, we can do it ourselves.
Yeah, I don't know, we have to bring that to you out to announce, can we afford it, we're going to use it, that expense, I'm assuming it's gonna be expensive. But I don't, I still don't remember which.
Well, CCTV came on board, they made it down and CCTV because one, the city had clean system. Not, so we had to pay also for cleaning system before they could see the TV system. So we're, we're cleaning the system substantially.
Yes.
So we don't have to do that.
Correct.
So one point one is 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 a goal that I'm referring to.
Okay, I know, I don't know which career you're talking about. Okay, um, so we, we're gonna, Chris, we talked about um, separate tasks and rep, what other threats are there out there?
You know, you you have the threat of consolidation. I don't know. I'm not sure it's a big threat now, it's a lot.
But what, I guess the question, I think, what, what kind of? What, what are, uh, what would have happened for this to to raise its own agenda? I think it is.
I think it is.
What would have to happen?
I, I.
What, what would give someone um, uh, justification to, hey, you need to consolidate because, why? Maybe because, because if they're saying the district's inefficient, the district is is spending too much money, what, what is it, what, what do you think could lead to that?
Well, I think we, we've talked a lot about our strengths and again, we get little resistance from the community in what we're doing and the community seems to be, as long as we continue those standards and staff continues to do what they need to do and we as a board continue to represent the district, I think it's. It, it pushes them away and keeps.
Yeah.
Now, it's in terms of what if, if they're driving it, if they're driving the effort, not a whole lot we can do about that, they're gonna, they do. Um, I think monitoring LAFCO, monitoring the things that that affect that, uh, which we do a pretty good job of, I think we need to continue to do.
When, when, when is the, I'm sorry, not, or they?
For, for um, I think it's coming out next year, I believe. I think it is, yeah.
Twenty twenty six?
Yeah, I believe so.
You know, one of my, one of the strengths that I think is important is our liaison meeting. That we have that and we're able to talk to all the identities thoroughly. And this is an opportunity that we're having a good strength there because we're able to keep that going no matter what on the communication.
Right, very good. And as you know, we're in the process of of, you know, having a nation plan, um, and that's gonna, that will be vital document for us to identify natural disasters that are addressed to us. Um, so I think that's gonna be very helpful to us, we can identify that as well, for us.
I think we need to look at, which kind of tend to tsunami planning, they they had a report.
Yeah.
I mean, I would expect only the lower.
I believe that, I believe that, so it's a very long, uh, tsunami.
Well, also there's there's, planning too is vulnerable, there's working a pretty uh, um. New wall from the.
Dark, but down like, down like coast highway, yeah.
Yeah.
That's quite true.
Yeah, and and so that, the tsunami, they they've studied. How far inland it will affect, uh, so we need to make sure that, like the city of Newport and and the low line areas along the San Diego River. It may not come that far.
We did, we did do it, we did look at all their latest data, so it's not always, and fortunately, one impacting the heart structure. So that's, that's, but, but again, go see Santa, it isn't half, that's the impact, right? But as far as our pump stations go, there's, there's no, no other pump station, it's not a risk or in a tsunami.
The closest one would be Adams, by the Lord, Adams, uh, twenty third, I was in twenty thirty, another one?
I.
No, I was, twenty third, I don't know. He got an Iowa pizza.
He's twenty third's one focus.
But I don't think, I mean, we don't have that.
I read that sort of.
But they know how far.
Yeah, yes, because we see, look at. You, you know, one other thing on that, the consolidation in the, in the, I think, public outreach, we do. Keep it at a high level, we do keep it at a high level, but I think we need to look at, uh, one of the things I just got a big kick out of was uh. Not the citizens advisory, what was the other one called?
Where we will.
People could come in here and.
Yeah.
What was it?
CIPA, Citizens Environmental Protection Academy.
Yeah, I thought that, I mean, any effort like that to to educate the public, when it comes down to another agency, we're gonna have allies. Because those people seem like they can do it.
Right.
So anything like that, um. I think helps.
Yeah, absolutely, uh, good one, very good. All right, anything else on threats?
We, we have three D R's. Pump station instrumentation markets, which, which here. Um. Or seismic expansion. Uh, the base was limited to the vast. Uh, I don't know if our sewer system has any uh. I don't know if our sewer system was included in that plan and I don't know if it needs to be. So they, they originally upgraded to the Newport, things that fall in. Uh, earthquake potential. Um.
Just.
And I don't know, it, it, you know, we have to. We use the same data or Rob used the same data, whoever did that study.
That we're in a sanitation district, that's very.
Well, the, 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 whoever the site, site monitors are, yeah. Upgraded as a potential from the Newport region to the salt. And there's a lot of, lot of talks in that, in that whole system, not just the one main fault.
Right, right, no, we'll, we'll do that, yeah, I know what you're talking about.
And so we need to understand if, if uh, if we've got facilities built on. If we can do that, uh.
Do you have the, you were there, from the staff? No, I'm sorry, I'm just looking for board's comments right now, because initially, I'll, I'll bring this with your comment, I'll share your comment with the staff and then we'll, we'll identify our strength in some of these. Well, okay, so we go to the next slide, uh, so we're not gonna go over this, you know, but this on the doors with staff, so once we, we identified um, our, our strength, we just talk, threats. Then we ask these questions, we ask them, how, how do we use our strengths, take advantage of these opportunities? How do we use our strengths to reduce the likelihood and impact of these strengths? And weaknesses, how, how do we overcome weaknesses that prevent us from taking advantage of those opportunities? How do we overcome the weaknesses that will be expressed in reality? So we're not gonna go with this today, but this is something we watched the last stand, we'll be, you know, finish our small analysis. But we go to the next slide. What I do need from the board today is looking at your vision, your mission, your providers, you need to let me know if you want to revise and whatnot. Okay, and these are very important um, elements of your strategic plan, so if you go to the next slide, please. This, the vision, in my opinion, is probably the most, one of the most important responsibilities of government life. If your vision is what you want, is what you vision, you know, just be five years now, anything now. Where you want to, what is, what is, what if you close your eyes, then what I want my future to look like, by the time you're there. And this is our current vision right now, our current vision is, is leading a community that's free from solid waste, wastewater pollution. Very short, to the point, what you're saying is that one day in our community, there'll be no more solid waste or wastewater pollution. That's what, that's what your vision. My question to you today is, do you still believe in that vision or you wanna change it more twice? Do you still believe it? What's, what's your thought on that vision?
I think a lot of, a lot of. Kind of incorporated, but part of the vision has to, um. Environment stability or recycling and things like that.
That's more, that's, that's more of a, a, I would say more ambitious data, your vision, what the vision is, what you, again, if I ever say, you close your eyes, you visualize, what is it you wanna look like? What is it, is, that, and what's the end game? What do you want to achieve? And you're saying here, the end game is no, no more pollution, it's gone, we, we, we've essentially eradicated all that stuff. That's, that's now, is that possible? Yeah, it's, I mean, it's, that's a strength, but that's the whole vision, vision is something that's gonna be almost impossible to obtain, but you should, you work hard and try to achieve it. That's what we're doing. But that, this is your current vision right now, so all we need to address, if you lack it, we can continue it for another five years, which is fine, or you want to tweak it a little bit, what is it, what's your desire?
I would think that the case wastewater and solid waste. You know, wastewater is, wastewater is the thing that we have worked hard at reducing the community's pollution. I can't, I don't know what. Whether we've ever had a solid waste pollution.
Well, solid waste pollution, it'd be like, i- if we're not collecting our trash on, you know, properly and 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 pollution can shoot on the streets, right? It's getting to the San Diego River, it's getting to the waterways, that's what I mean, that's where we're, you know, you wanna make sure, sure we have uh, uh, convenient uh, efficient solid waste collection that we are legally disposing of our trash, uh, be sustainable, you know, that's, that's all the ties in the solid waste.
And then road control and that kind of thing.
Yeah, all that stuff, you know, this is, and it's a big picture, we're looking at the big picture here. Yeah, all that stuff, you know, this is, and it's the big picture, we're looking at the big picture here.
Well, I think, I think Mike mentioned earlier is, you know. The community, one of the community's biggest concerns is. Days when we don't collect trash. And I've taken communities where. Where I believe they put out, they put out a sign, they, you know, New Year's Day. Your trash shouldn't be delayed, that that was the biggest question that I got, especially older.
That's more of an operation, so I get it, I get it, I started bringing you back, look at, look at what you're thinking about five years, what do you want this community to look like?
I would say we keep this right now, so we hear from staff also. Yeah, I don't see, I agree, Lord. Yeah. To say it may have a better idea too.
Okay.
Since you guys agree, keep this as now.
Okay.
I guess ultimately, our charge, like the community is to keep it pollution, I mean.
That's that's your, that's your vision, right, that's that's what you need to see that happen, that one day we're gonna achieve that, one day, and I might have it in five years, but that's. That's what we're gonna work hard and try and achieve, so our mission statement is a little different, that's our purpose, that's why we exist. You know, why was the organization created, why are we, what are we here to do, what is our purpose, and so our purpose, or sorry, our mission statement. Is to protect public health and environment for current these generations. That's what we do, that's what we get up every day, that's what we get out of it, this is what, this is our mission, this is what we strive to do. So my question to the board is, is do you like that mission is, again, I and I also recommend. Mission statement is what I like about this, it's 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 short and to the point, if I if I ask any staff members, what's our mission, they're gonna remember that.
The only, the only thing I think is missing is the communication. If we, if we could say something about, you know, what we're saying on that, and we communicate with.
That is true, but is 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 that, is that our purpose? Our real purpose, the community, I think that's good, it's an important aspect, it's important, functional, it's to communicate well, is that what we get up? Is that what we're trying to achieve, and what I was trying to get at, you see some issues are are so difficult and they're the older parent. Right, and right, and and to me, I know what you're saying, a little bit, and no longer we plan them, they're too long. This is a really good, if you're gonna tell me, if you're gonna tweet it, it's even short uh like this, and so they're willing to remember it, but this is, this is again. Reminding that is our purpose, why we get up is to protect public health and environment for current these generations.
I'd say we keep this and maybe move our names idea down for values.
Okay, that could be true, yeah, okay.
We have four values posted.
Yeah, these are four values right here.
No, but I mean, behind you, we have it posted, we don't have ambition and visions.
We do.
Yeah, around, around, right, love. So, so our core values is what we believe in, you are strong, you are police, um. Okay, bye, thank you. So these are our core values, this is what we believe in, because some of our bodies, we use a little helpless, make our decisions, uh again, uh we can. Uh there's, there's um eight core values, I I recommend not go more than ten. Um but um we can delete some of them, we can, we can keep some of them. Um some other core values, you might want to, you could hurt communication, we could definitely add that to it. Um innovation is another core value that you want to think about, sustainability. Accountability, talk, you said communications, trust, those are my ideas, so so um, am I hearing, you want? Do you wanna add communications and remove them, or do you just wanna add it to the list, when we talk about communications?
Well, I would, I mean. But it's a possibility, the communications.
Is there anything that you, would you want to just add it, or we wanna replace it with one of these core values?
The only reason I'm thinking of communications is because uh when something happens and they can't get us. We try to get to to get CRNR or CRNR in the process. And you know, we have that part, and I know I've solved a couple of problems.
Add it, great, maybe you can add it, okay, that would be nine.
Well, I think.
See what else.
I I think, um, I mean, it, they. What we're talking about is communicating with staff, and I'm thinking of a different word, that would be higher level. How we interact, how. We we've talked about our social media presence being better than usually. And education. Yeah, but education, I think, was.
Outreach. Outreach.
I need to, that that embraces how we communicate.
The part about communication, um. Several of those already kind of deal with communication. I mean, when you talk about dedication, services in a manner that's competent, courteous, responsive. That means we communicate. Transparency, we believe in an open government, where information and documents are easily accessible above, that's communication, it's it. Communication ties into so many of those already, it's built into it. So adding something about communication is redundant, I I think, I think what, what we have up there deals with that.
Well, you know what? I would say I, you'd have a good point, and what I think, well, I'm looking at teamwork there. That involves communication, so you don't have to say it.
And I I think the biggest one is, is uh. You know, the dedication and integrity, I mean, if you do both of those, that means you're communicating with the public.
Yeah.
No, I I think you sort of get the. If you, if you could take a vision as, if you take your core values, having a vision, it is communication.
That's what I mean.
I think it's still.
Well, I think, I think instead of saying easily accessible to the public, that means public has to do something, you know, to. Find it. What, what we're hoping for, what we've, what we've done, a good job of. Educating the public. Maybe easily accessible to the okay.
I like, no, I think it's an outlet, it's, it would, it assumes everything in there that we're talking about, as a possibility, I mean. Stop talking to staff also, see anything, but I think we, it would just undermine it's a possibility, okay, all communication, I mean. I agree, I I'd like you guys to talk about innovation. Go go back to the slide, couple of slides about how do we keep a consol- consolidation effort? We become more innovative, when we show the public what we're doing to take care of the vision, so. I think, I think innovation, something with innovation, you guys ought to look at a lot.
Innovation.
You know, using, using AI, we're using the technology that.
Alright, thank you, so that, last thing I wanna talk about is is redefining our strategic elements, see if they're our priorities, so if our vision is. Is leading a community that is free from solid waste and wastewater pollution, well, how, what's gonna, well, how are we gonna get there, what's gonna get there? And so we have nine elements and and uh ties to those elements are 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 the objectives, how to achieve those elements, so. The first three on the, on the screen here is our, of their sewer infrastructure, and our objective is to maintain the optimal wastewater collection. So my question is, do you agree with that, or do you want, you you think sewer infrastructure should remain as well as the elements?
Yeah.
Yeah, right, solid waste, alright, so our objective is solid waste is to provide an efficient, solid waste collection system. To reduce waste and increase diversion while maintaining environmental integrity, yeah, is that important, we need to keep that as an element. And then it works with parameters, to maintain responsible, living, and active practices to protect public health, safety, and good resources. Good? Okay, I think we, so, alright, so we have our next three are partnerships. And that is to cultivate and maintain legitimate relationships with other organizations to achieve desired goals and outcomes. Like that, like that.
That referred to like the last.
Later, we, we're just working on school districts, we can be working with OC San, we can be working with. We agree with partnership of that.
I think, I think so. You know, but we can refer, once we get together with the staff's ideas too, then we can.
Yeah, right now, you like it right now, do you want to tell me?
Let's, you should, do you have any comments, if we go through these?
Not yet.
Not, I mean, now, like, I I just right now, just wanna kind of pick your brain, get your thoughts off, you're, you're really going to be more, you're listening to policy for us, you give us direction where you wanna go, so. It's important to hear from you and your aspects of this. So, the next one is community outreach communications, purposes to engage with the community for clear. And for more informative and accessible communications and learning opportunities, I think we should talk about that recently, that's very important, right?
What do you think, right, should we, no? I think you're gonna say yes, right?
Yeah, alright, and then the next one, we have district management, that's to ensure ethical, legal, and transparent management of the district while promoting a safe. You got it, the public work environment. Good? Next one, we have two more, our last two, that's why, is human resources management. To create a culture that's based on safety, trust, cooperation, and development that results in high performance organization. And then finance, to maintain a strong, sustainable financial financial position that ensures customer responsibility.
So, are these what we currently have?
Yes, they are current elements, and so I'm, I'm seeing, if you got the board, do you like these elements, do you wanna add a new element, what is, what is your desire?
Have no luck in the area.
Not, alright, I mean, you don't wanna have, I always say, you don't wanna have twenty elements, right, I mean, so, if, you may, I, if you wanna add one more, I think we can do that. Um just, you know, let me know what's, what you think we should add out here.
Maybe wait, yeah, I think we may put that as it is and then see with the staff. Yeah, so they understand. The only thing I, again, starting to. Need to, need to grow again, but I think the only one I would add is. Uh uh innovative, innovation, strategic, I'm still, I don't know where that. Something about providing um innovative solutions to future needs or something like that, maybe that's a possibility. I would list that as a. Innovations.
Yeah, my case referred to the last.
Yeah.
Alright, so if there's nothing else from this slide, then, then again, thank you very much for your comments and suggestions, we will, we'll jot that down and then I'm gonna share that with staff. So I guess, and then in the next one month, I'll be needing with staff to really, again, uh share your comments, go over the slot, slot analysis, see what staff puts up. Uh and then um we will come back um on on April eighth. Uh with uh share with our comments, our suggestions, along with our graduation goals. And then completion timeline, we'll be checking that, and see uh with the anticipated adoption date on June twenty third, so.
With that, April eighth, they just, we refer to these items.
Yeah, well, we're referring, April eighth, these items plus also will be given you, so under the um, go back to the slide, please. So if you look at our current strategic plan, um under our strategic elements, so so. The element objective, and then we have strategies, and then we have goals, and so that's staff come fill off. So we'll come up with strategy, we'll come up with completion timeline, and we'll share that with with the board, if you let us know if you're comfortable with that or not.
Uh Scott, real quick, Gina, I was kind enough to point out that the May twenty sixth date, our meetings actually moved to the twenty seventh. Tuesday, the twenty seventh, due to Memorial Day on the twenty sixth.
The other thing is, I think let's be flexible with that, related. Study session, um depending on the volume we have, really with study session. The strategic plan is important enough that we have to, you know, a separate meeting to do just the strategic plan. Let's keep that in line, because again, I hate, this is so important, I hate to model it into a. Study session or more than keep order being right, that's why I asked that question. I I I just think it's, obviously, that's what we have to. Use to steer the next five years.
Well, May twenty sixth, day was changed.
May twenty seventh, Tuesday, the twenty seventh, that is our board meeting day.
Thank you guys, oh, or thank you for. Okay, that may, that may be okay, I was twenty second. Any other questions, anything else from staff? Thank you, guys.
I'm sorry for being all late, my cap, my calendar just, well, first of all, my communication was. It wasn't working on that side that the old buildings.
Thank you for showing.
We're here tomorrow.
Yeah, we're, we're excited, so it's, so it's finishing tomorrow, it's still at nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock, thank you. See you tomorrow.
Thank you tomorrow.